Twenty-two seconds. All the board of supervisors, whoops. Do you have a problem, Desi?
No.
No, Madam Mayor, we're ready to go.
Okay. Call the Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Relay, may I have a roll call, please?
I got it. Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Supervisor Jones. Supervisor White.
Here.
Giomi.
Get my name?
Her phone.
I'm here.
And Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
A quorum is present, thank you. Do we have Fred Kingman from LifePoint Church? Wonderful. Will lead us in the invocation, thank you.
Okay, let's pray. Father, thank you for this morning. Or thank you for those who lead our city, who are diligent and committed to serving us, giving time away from their family to serve this great community. Lord, we pray that you give them wisdom today, that you would allow them to make wise decisions. Father, we pray for those in our city who are sick with COVID. We pray that you'd bring healing to them, Father. We pray that the cases would continue to drop, the deaths would continue to drop, and you'd be with those in the hospital right now. You'd bring healing to them, Father. Thank you so much for allowing us to serve in this great city in different capacities. Father, thank you for our mayor, Lori. Pray that you'd bless her today as she leads this meeting and just be with our leaders in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, it's wonderful. Mr. Woodbury, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. This is time for public comment. Desi, do we have anyone on the line?
We have a couple callers this morning. Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Sharon Ross with Capital City Art Initiative.
Hi, Sharon, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm delighted to introduce you to the new exhibition in the Crowell Boardroom. It's by Kyle Carish, a young artist from Reno whose highly crafted, innovative pieces all use recycled aluminum cans, wood, and some plastics. Nancy Paulson is sharing the essay in the flyer. This show was previously up at WNC's Bristol Cone Gallery, and Kyle was generous enough to loan it to us again for the Crowell Boardroom. So we hope you enjoy it. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Sharon? No, just thank you very much. And please let Kyle know how much we appreciate the christening of the art in the Robert Bob Crowell Boardroom. So thank you, Sharon.
Well, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Gene Robinson.
Thank you, Gene, go ahead.
And, yeah, I'm calling about, I know we're off the official agenda here, but I am following up on a letter I sent to the Board of Supervisors a week ago concerning the Tahoe Transportation District proposed vehicle user fee for the Lake Tahoe Basin. And I'm just calling to make an obiture to have the Board of Supervisors of Carson City follow the lead of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners who voted five-nothing and approved a motion not to support the TTD Board authority to make future decisions about implementing revenue mechanisms. They have no interest in supporting a vehicle user fee or any other fees proposed in the TTD proposal. I just want to add a personal note, because I'm doing this for the community. In 2015, I underwent a spinal fusion surgery at Carson Tahoe Hospital. I could never have recovered from this surgery or stayed recovered without access to our national forest lands in the Lake Tahoe Basin. I have been spending up to 200 days a year on our public lands in the basin doing this. Yet according to the proposed vehicle fees by the Tahoe Transportation District, I would have needed to pay them $1,100 a year to access my federal lands at Lake Tahoe. I also want to say that the, one of the memorandum I have in the Tahoe Transportation District's presentation to the City Council of South Lake Tahoe, it is the assessment of business interests there who have a memorandum here, that they are attempting to reduce or stop day trip travelers to Lake Tahoe, which includes all our valley residents that spend significant dollars at Lake Tahoe. But on a personal note, you know, I just want to say that there are many other members of this community whose very health relies on access to our public lands at Lake Tahoe. Whether the public will have fees to access public lands at Lake Tahoe is not the province of the Tahoe Transportation District, but for the public, the Forest Service, and oversight by Congress. I also want to say that the fee proposal that you're probably aware of is probably one of the most regressive, punitive, and gentrifying in effect of a fee that I've ever seen. So I'm just calling this morning to urge the Carson City Board of Supervisors to go on the record. And I've already been to Carson Tahoe Hospital to voice my concerns of the gentrifying effect it would have on community members recovering from surgeries, of accessing their public lands, that the Board of Supervisors go on the record. Has did, just to recap, the Douglas County Board of Commissions and vote unanimously to oppose the vehicle fee plan, no matter what guise that is presented, that they are in opposition to any vehicle fees at Lake Tahoe.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your comments. If the item comes before us, we'll take your comments under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Do we have any more callers, Desi?
There's no more public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm Matt. Did you want to do some public comment?
Good morning, Mayor and Supervisors. Matthew Lawton, Deputy Chief Information Officer, for the record. I'm here this morning to introduce to you our new asset manager for Carson City. This is a position that's very near and dear to my heart because I was the previous incumbent of this position for the last four years. So after a competitive recruitment, I'm pleased to introduce Tyler Jesse. He has experience in land surveying, renewable energy, control systems, and he has a degree in information technology from Arizona State University. And to top it all off, he is a Carson City native and a graduate of Carson High School. He's been with the city for the last five years in the capacity of the systems technician that supports our asset management software. So with that, I am pleased to announce Tyler Jesse as our asset manager for Carson City.
Well, Mr. Jesse, welcome. I met you briefly and already indicated how excited I was to see all the great work you're going to do on this program for us. But did you want to say a few words? You don't have to.
Thank you very much, I'm happy to be here. And I'm happy to carry on the work that I do.
I think Carson City's the model community on the use of this. So I expect to see your name in lights and, you know, flashing and things like that. So does anyone have any comment? Okay, thank you so very much and welcome. I look forward to your reports. I'm going to do one other public comment. I learned that Harold Jacobson passed away on January 29th at 102 years old. Some of you may know a little about him, but I just found this interesting tidbit. We had done a proclamation, a day in honor of Harold Jacobson, on April 18th of 2013. And I just think it's still fitting to read this about him. So, whereas Harold Jacobson was born in Elko, Nevada, in the year 1918, and whereas Harold graduated from the University of Nevada Reno in 1941 with a Bachelor of Science degree in agriculture. Whereas Harold was elected to the Nevada State Assembly in 1946 as a representative of Humboldt County. Whereas Harold was elected to represent the Cow Counties on the Board of Regents in 1962. And whereas Harold was elected Chairman of the Board of Regents in 1971 and re-elected to that position in 1973. Whereas Harold was first elected Mayor of Carson City in 1976 and was re-elected Mayor in 1980. And whereas Harold received the Distinguished Nevadan Award in 1980 from the Nevada System of Higher Education. Whereas Harold was appointed as Director of the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District in 1985. Whereas Harold is a true pillar of the Carson City community. Now therefore, I, Robert L. Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the entire community, do hereby proudly proclaim April 18th, 2013, a day in honor of Harold Jacobson. And I want to just add, so is today. So just put that out there. He was a good friend. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the approval of the minutes for January 7th, 2021. Does any board member have any corrections? I'll accept a motion. Mr. Jones moved to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Just going to enable it first, sorry about that. I have three votes. Motion carried unanimously. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. This consists of items for Finance 7A, Purchasing 8A. Does any members of the Board have any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Motion by Supervisor Giomi, second by Supervisor Shutey to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
I don't seem to be voting.
You said aye, so...
Did say aye.
Aye. Can you even just hit your name? See if that works.
We have a malfunction.
Okay. Motion carried unanimously. These lasted a long time, we're on our second meeting. Okay, we are now on Agenda Item 10A, which is for the treasure. Ms. Robertson, you want to come and talk to us about this, please? Oh, can you sit to this one? Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. This is an item we bring to you each year. Unfortunately, sometimes our taxpayers get so delinquent that the statute has us sell the properties if we need to. And the first step in that direction is for the Board to make an order to direct the treasurer to sell. I came before you, well, I didn't come before you because of the pandemic last year. But last April, you all voted to postpone our sale. Because of the pandemic, we weren't allowed to have public meetings like we did with a, you know, when we did have the public auction before, you know, there were quite a few people in the room. So this year, if you do order us to sell, then we are considering an online auction. We are working with a company that Elko County and Nye County both use and they're happy with. So unless you are opposed to that, we would be holding the auction virtually.
Does anyone have any questions? Supervisor Giomi?
Yes, thanks, Gil. In your notes, it says that some properties may be protected from sale under bankruptcy laws. Are you familiar with any of these properties that you have listed as being under bankruptcy protection?
No, to our knowledge, it's not. That's just kind of a CYA comment.
Right, I just kind of wondered if you knew of anything at this point.
I don't.
It doesn't mean they couldn't enter bankruptcy between now and the time you do the sale, correct?
Right.
Okay. And I just wanted to point out the address, yeah.
Yes, it's Champion Street.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
So is this an opportunity? I did check with the DA's office and they indicated we could do the online sales. Do you see this as something, as a good opportunity to see how well it works? Because we have so few properties and then you would entertain that in the norm?
Yes, if you all are agreeable to it, we're looking at entering a contract. And I believe it is a five- or six-year term contract. We, Carson City doesn't pay anything for this. The successful bidder would pay the fee to the auction company. Like I said, Elko County and Nye County have both done it, but they are also very different from us. I mean, they have pages and pages and pages listing parcels that they sell each year. They're also in that position sometimes when there is so much owed on a property that it's actually more than what the property's worth and so they don't get sold at all. So it's an attempt to get them back on the tax roll, so to speak, but, yeah.
Thank you. Well, entertain a motion if we're ready. Supervisor Giomi?
I move to order and direct the Carson City Treasurer to sell each property described on the record in accordance with NRS 361595.
I second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor Jones to sell the properties. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so very much, Ms. Robinson. We were going to let, we were going to let that go. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 11A, which is an item for the District Attorney's Office. Mr. Woodbury?
Good morning. So Jason Woodbury, Carson City District Attorney, for the record. With us here today in the room is Rochelle Resnick. Ms. Resnick is our office's Department Business Manager. She will be involved in this project, as I'll explain during the course of my presentation. We also should have remotely available Jeremy Reichenberg, who is our Chief Criminal Deputy District Attorney. He is our person most knowledgeable in the office regarding both our existing case management system and the one we're proposing to move to. We should also have John Kitzmiller. He is a representative of CarpeL Solutions, which is the vendor for the case management system that's proposed for you. We also have Matthew Lawton, Deputy Chief Information Officer for Carson City, who's been involved in the process. I don't see James Underwood in here, but he may be, he's on remotely. Mr. Underwood has also been involved in this process. So he's available for any questions. We tried to make sure we had everybody available here for any questions that need to be answered. This item concerns the case management system of the District Attorney's Office. Case management systems are just a fundamental, essential tool for any modern prosecutor's office. We have utilized an application called Justware as our case management system. Under Knoll Waters, that program was actually implemented and we were one of the first offices, really in the nation and certainly in Nevada, to utilize a case management system in the way that it's come to be used by everybody. So we've, the case management system becomes vital as soon as a case comes through our door. And when I say a case, I'm talking right now about adult criminal prosecutions. But we also use the case management system for juvenile delinquency proceedings, for child welfare proceedings, and for guardianship proceedings. But obviously, the bulk of our business is in the adult criminal prosecution area and that's where we get our main function from the case management system. So a case comes in our door right now, as it has for ever, on paper. It comes in the form of a police report, witness statements, whatever may be involved in the initiation of a case. And we have a data entry clerk who will, the very first thing that happens is our data entry clerk enters the information about the case. They'll enter information about the criminal charge that the officer has identified, enter information about who is the law enforcement officer or law enforcement officers involved in the case, witnesses, and of course, victims. From there, the electronic case file that is created in Justware becomes really our, the main repository for any information and processes that are going to be involved in that case. A prosecutor will be assigned, a legal assistant will be assigned. Anytime you pick up the phone and talk to somebody, talk to a witness, talk to a victim, you're going to be entering notes about that conversation into the system. When we receive a court date from the court for a proceeding, that will be entered in the system. We utilize it to generate our calendars and so we know the assignment, each prosecutor's going to know his or her assignment for the week or a couple weeks ahead and can make plans for that. We continue at this time to maintain paper files. It's our desire and probably the desire of everybody, ultimately, to get to a point where we are paperless and we can do all that electronically. But the paper file really is just, frankly, kind of a backup to our electronic file that's maintained in the Justware program. The case management system generates virtually all of the documents that we are, that we will file in a criminal case. I'll just take the most fundamental document as a criminal complaint. That's going to be the document we file with the court to charge somebody with a crime. Most, most of our crimes are offenses that we charge over and over and over again. So we have a template that virtually all a prosecutor has to do is click a few boxes and that template will be used to generate the criminal complaint. And sometimes you have to tweak it a little bit, but by and large, the document is prepared. And I mentioned criminal complaint, but we also use that for stipulations, memorandums of plea negotiation, motions, opposition to motions. Almost every document that we generate is from a template in the Justware system that saves us, obviously, from having to either type the document fresh or cut and paste from other documents or things like that. So saves us a lot of time with that. The case management system also generates our subpoenas. At the outset of the case, the assigned prosecutor's going to identify the witnesses that are needed for each criminal proceeding. And once we get the court date, the schedule from the court, a legal assistant will generate those subpoenas. If it's a law enforcement subpoena, it will be emailed to the law enforcement officer. The law allows us to serve subpoenas to law enforcement officers electronically. For other witnesses, it's going to go to our process servers. It's going to be a hard copy document that the process servers serve on the witnesses that we need. All that happens is automated. All that happens automatically. Once a case is disposed of, in whatever way it's done, information about the disposition of the case will be entered into our case management system. This allows us to generate reports and there we have some statutorily required reports that we have to file with various agencies of the state. And that management system generates those, either generates the report itself or generates the data from which we compile the report. We also use those reports to learn various things about our office. How many domestic battery cases came into the office last year? You know, what were the dispositions of those? So things like that, that's just one example. But how, we also use it to, obviously, monitor caseloads among our prosecutors, make sure that we're not too out of whack with one prosecutor having a far heavier load than a different prosecutor. So we use it for those kinds of things. In explaining just how important a case management system is, it's kind of hard to encapsulate all that without taking up hours and hours of your time. I mean, what I would say, just kind of jokingly, but not really, is try to imagine, try to explain how important your eyes, ears, arms, and legs are in your daily life. And that's about what our case management system is to us, just critical. So we've used Justware for 20 years. The owner of Justware is an entity called Journal Technologies. Historically, we have the application. They provide updates on a, it's not really a regular basis, just from time to time, they'll update the application. And Carson City pays an annual fee to Just, to Journal Technologies for support. So, you know, I suppose in any computer system and certainly in a system like this, as complex as this, there are fairly frequently bugs that need to be fixed. We get a new update to a different program, Outlook or Windows or something like that, and there's some gap in the system that needs to be fixed. So we pay an annual support fee. I do need to correct some information that I gave Supervisor White and Supervisor Shutey offline. I thought that annual support fee was $19,000. It's actually, last year's invoice was a little bit more than $14,000. Yeah, it has fluctuated from time to time. So I may have pulled that $19,000 number from a different year, but last year, the most recent year, was $14,000. We were notified in late March of 2020. So too far into the budget process for us to really address the situation within that process that Journal Technologies was no longer going to provide support or updates for the Justware system. It was pretty much out of the blue. We didn't have any reliable advance warning that that would be happening and it frankly kind of caught us off guard. And I think caught everybody off guard because that was, to the best of my information, by far the most prevalent case management system utilized by prosecutor offices across the country. They were moving from Justware to a cloud-based system operated and supported by Journal called E Prosecutor. Right now, Justware is, all the data that is entered into Justware is hosted on Carson City servers. So we have the application, but all the data is hosted there. E Prosecutor, the new product from Journal, was going to host that in the cloud. So our natural inclination was, we've been with Justware for 20 years, this is a successor to Justware, we'll probably just, you know, move over to that. So we got a demonstration. We didn't, they didn't reach out to us for a demonstration until July of 2020. But we got that demonstration and it was, we didn't think it was going to be a product that suited our needs. It was moving from our existing application to really just kind of a shell of the application that we have and did allow us the freedom to build in the features that we utilize now. But that was really going to be on us, meaning the Carson City DA's office and IT to try to figure out exactly how to make those work. The real kicker, though, was the cost that was estimated for, to move to the E Prosecutor system. We were going to continue to pay an annual support fee for that, We were going to continue to pay an annual, uh, support fee for that, um, but we were going to be required to purchase a minimum of 50 licenses. Uh, so we need, as, as is indicated in the documents, 32 licenses, but, uh, their contract was going to require us to buy 50 licenses at a cost of, well, to pay an annual support fee for 50 licenses at a thousand dollars apiece. Um, we were also going to be required to maintain a minimum amount of storage hosted by them, uh, at a cost, uh, which worked out to 40,000. So it's going to be a $90,000 annual support fee that, that we're going to be required to pay. So at that point, July of 2020, we started, uh, exploring other systems and we did, uh, and, and this is mainly Jeremy Reichenberg because he's our, he's our in-house expert. Uh, started looking at a, at the availability of other systems, the feasibility of other systems. We were able to eliminate quite a few through that kind of preliminary process because they just didn't do the things we needed it to do or, or, or we wanted it to, to do. So we really came down to two systems that we took a deeper dive into. Uh, and one is Prosecutor by Carpel, PBK is what I'll call it today, uh, and I'll talk more about that i- in a minute. But the other system we identified, uh, was J-Works, uh, which is produced by a, a company called Equivant. Um, we, J-Works was functional, um, but it was probably, uh, pretty much at the minimal end of our functionality that we were after. Uh, it, it didn't do everything that Just Where was doing, uh, and it was going to be, um, again, something that worked for us, but, but wasn't, uh, wasn't nearly, uh, the product that we think PBK provides for us. Uh, and I'll talk about, about the cost estimates, uh, in a minute, but let me first talk about, uh, what we found attractive about PBK, uh, and, and what we found most attractive was both the functionality and the cost. Um, the functionality is quite frankly, just remarkable. Um, it will allow us to do things that have been on our radar for years. Um, and, uh, most significantly, it's going to profoundly, uh, and substantially improve our ability to communicate with victims, our ability to keep victims in the loop of what's happening with their cases. Um, so we're required by Marcy's Law Constitutional Amendment, uh, to advise victims of crimes of information about their case. When is the next court proceeding? What is the nature of the next court proceeding? Is it a, is it a bail hearing? Is it a preliminary hearing? Is it a trial? What's going on with it? Uh, when is it? And, and if they want to provide input, they can be there, they can provide it through us. Um, and, and that's, I mean, that's a constitutional amendment, but, but frankly, we've been doing that for years just because that, that's the right thing to do. Um, now, victims may be contacted by, 99% of our contact with victims is one of four positions in our office. Either it's the prosecutor, the legal assistant, uh, or, uh, uh, one of our two victim witness services personnel. By far, the bulk of the communication comes from victim witness service personnel, uh, and it's a phone call for the most part. You know, we may get an email address, there may be an email address in the report that we utilize, but most of their communication is, is, you know, personal. It's a, it's a phone call or an in-person meeting, uh, to let them, but, but a lot of the communication is frankly, just nuts and bolts. It's just, uh, you know, this, this case is scheduled for a bail hearing on such and such a date. Uh, you, you can be there, you can provide us input. Um, what, what notifications do you want? I mean, believe it or not, some victims just, they don't want anything to do with the case. They, uh, it's a, it's a terrible episode and they only want to know when they have to be at court and, and, uh, you know, how they're going to, when, when they're required to be there. Um, this, PBK will automate a lot of that. It will, it, it will create automated text or emails to victims to tell them, this is what's happening with your case, this is when it's scheduled, or the defendant has agreed to plead guilty, so you no longer have to appear, you have the right to appear if you want, sentencing will be scheduled. It automates a lot of that communication and it's going to be, um, we're going to be able to communicate with victims more frequently, we're going to be able to keep them in the loop better, um, and, and it's just going to be, uh, an astonishing improvement. It also is two-way communication. Um, so a victim will be able to tell us, you know, hey, I got a new phone, uh, this is my new phone number, uh, you know, and, and, and to implement and, and to input that in a way that it automatically is put into our system. A victim tells us that now, uh, and, and we'll get the information in the system of course, but it's going to take a human inputting that into the system. Uh, so it's, uh, it's just going to be, uh, I, I'm really excited about especially that feature because it's really going to allow us, my victim witness administrator, uh, has been on my case for years for exactly this. Let's, let's do something to be better about how we keep victims in the loop. Um, and there are systems out there. Uh, Just Where did not have this particular system, but it was something that we could have added through, uh, you know, a different vendor, uh, but at, at a, at a tremendous cost, which, you know, has, has steered us away from that before. But that, that's going to be a, a, a critical, uh, thing that, that we're going to be able to do. It's going to, uh, the PBK system, uh, will streamline and automate our discovery process. In a criminal case, we're obligated under the constitution to provide all the information that we have to the defense counsel. Fair enough, I mean, that's, uh, for obvious reasons. For the, the past several years, we have been doing that electronically. We used to do it just by paper. Now we've moved up in, in doing it electronically where we upload everything into an, an application called ShareFile. The defense counsel gets an email, hey, your stuff is in ShareFile, go ahead and take a look at it. Uh, so much better than, than we used to do. ShareFile comes at a cost of, uh, about $1,750 a year, uh, for, for that service. PBK internalizes that entire electronic discovery process. Uh, so right now, what we have to do is we have to take that paper that we get from the sheriff's office, we have to scan it into Just Where, we have to, uh, upload that into, into ShareFile. Um, and all those steps are done by, by a legal assistant clicking. Now papers, you know, that's simple enough, but when you have these massive files, like a two-hour recorded interview, or, you know, hundreds and hundreds of photographs, or, uh, more, you know, more to the point, uh, body cam footage, um, that takes hours and hours and hours to download, then upload. Um, y- y- it's not uncommon to have, you know, an, a, an upload interrupted, so, and without us realizing it, it's not uploaded to the ShareFile system, the defense counsel never got it, um, and we thought it was uploaded. Um, a- and, and on the other end, on defense counsel's end, it takes them hours and hours and hours to, to download this stuff. This will, uh, create, basically incorporate, um, an enhanced version of ShareFile where if, if it's in our system, if it's marked for discovery, it automatically goes out to the defense counsel. They're automatically notified it's available for you. Uh, and in particular, the body cam stuff, uh, has been a tremendous challenge and this, uh, PBK integrates with Evidence.com, the, um, repository for all the body cam. And, uh, a defense counsel is not going to get the body cam footage itself in what we provide, but they will get a link to go to Evidence.com. So it's not stored in several different places, it's going to be stored in one place, uh, and, and everybody will have access to what they need. There's an e-supina feature for law enforcement. Um, we'll simply have to click a few boxes, that email will go directly to law enforcement. Uh, they will get it just like they have been, but the, the new feature will be when a case is resolved or postponed for some reason, uh, they'll get automated notifications of that. Right now, it's a legal assistant picking up the phone, trying to contact the officer, maybe that takes a couple, uh, a couple times, maybe they try to send an email or a text. This is going to automate all that and save, uh, our legal assistants who, who work always at capacity, uh, a, a lot of, a lot of effort in that regard. So this, this contract, the proposed contract also includes a law enforcement portal, so officers can go into that portal, see what cases they're involved in, see when they're scheduled to appear for court, see what the status of a case is. We get a lot of calls checking on the status of a case. Hey, I sent this request for an arrest warrant over, you know, a couple of weeks ago, where are we with that? Uh, so it'll improve that communication. Storage, PBK, the, the proposed contract is for PBK to provide the storage for us. Uh, we, we are, um, currently housed on Carson City servers, we take up a, a decent amount of space on those servers, uh, and, and, uh, this proposal is to move that storage over to PBK. Um, the most, besides the victim stuff, uh, the most exciting potential feature is an interface with law enforcement, the law enforcement case management system and, and the court case management system. Uh, this would be the cherry on top, uh, if, if we're able to make it work. We don't know right now if we're able to make it work because it takes the two ends to make the interface. PBK's end has offered it to us for, uh, the terrific price of $10,000 per interface. And getting quotes historically for an interface with Tiburon, the Carson City Sheriff's Office, um, uh, management system, uh, those quotes have been upwards of $100,000. Uh, so it's just been cost prohibitive. But, but that would be the cherry on top to say, now we don't necessarily get paper, uh, we get the data entered directly into our system. Uh, and, uh, so those, those features are, are, um, just really attractive to us. The annual support cost for, uh, the PBK system, uh, in, in the proposed contract is The charges that are, uh, itemized in that have not changed from PBK for nine years. They have been exactly the same for the past nine years. Uh, there has been some, uh, communication that, that I had with Supervisor White about the possibility of a multi-year support contract, uh, and, and we will, uh, explore that with PBK. The proposed contract is for, for one year of annual support. Uh, we'd like to lock that in, or at least propose to the board to lock that in for more years. I've talked to John Kitzmiller about that and, and that is something we can explore and will explore, uh, but the, the contract before you today is, is just for that, that one year. Um, after, you know, seeing what Carpel can do, we coordinated with IT. Uh, IT participated in a demonstration of the product, uh, they answered all of IT's questions. IT independently vetted the Carpel system, uh, and found it to be, um, a, a, a good system, a reliable system. Um, they did have a couple of recommendations for us, which have been incorporated into the contract. They recommended an escrow agreement. And what that does is Carpel deposits its source code for PBK into, or with an escrow agent. It's held there and if PBK ever stops or terminates or, or whatever it may be, we have the right to go access that source code. Um, now using that source code, uh, we would be able to continue to support the system, uh, either internally with Carson City IT or perhaps a third-party vendor would be necessary to, to provide that expertise, but we would, um, we would be able to continue to maintain The, uh, the, the annual cost for that, I mentioned $29,600. Um, the J-Works, the other proposal, the other hosted proposal that we looked at, uh, for the first year of annual support was going to be $54,000. So although this is a jump from the Just Where annual support fee, um, it, it's less than the other products, uh, that, that we looked at, pretty significantly less. Uh, we also checked with other jurisdictions utilizing, uh, the PBK product. We checked with City of Henderson in Nevada, San Benito County and El Dorado County in California and Tulsa County in Oklahoma, um, and, and they frankly, all, all raved about the, the product and in particular, the support that PBK provides. Um, they report that, uh, they're, they are, uh, responsive within a very short period of time, uh, and can fix minor issues very, very quickly, uh, and even major issues, they have been, all, all been able to resolve within at most a day or two, uh, i- is what that takes. So, uh, Tulsa went through the Just Where transition, uh, they report it went very smoothly on their end. Uh, the nation in Nevada are going with PBK, there's currently, they're currently serving 483 jurisdictions, six in Nevada. I've spoken with the DAs in Washoe and Douglas Counties, um, and, uh, you know, without telling tales out of school, uh, I'm pretty confident they're going to go with, with the Carpel product. Lyon County unfortunately is going with a different product that we looked at, a more basic product called Filevine, but, uh, those other two neighboring jurisdictions are, are going, uh, with PBK. The timing is something I want to explain to the board because I, I realize it's not, generally it's unfair to take a request outside of the budget process. It puts you in, and I respect that. I, um, I, this is the first time I've ever been before the board outside the budget process. Um, and the reason I feel that it's important in this case is, uh, that, uh, PBK is a hot product. Um, they're signing up customers daily and, um, the more customers they sign up ahead of us, the further out that puts our go-live date. We have, uh, they have guaranteed us a, a go-live date of November 15th of this year, uh, which is, is terrific. It's a four-month transition period to go live, so that will begin, uh, you know, about, about July, uh, or, yeah, uh, to, to get to the go-live. That, we're exposed from July 1st to November 15th that we're working on measures and, and , uh, working with IT to manage how we're going to deal with July 1st to November 15th. Um, and, and, but the more exposure we have, uh, the, the more precarious our position. Um, if we miss this sort of window of opportunity, uh, talking with John Kitzmiller several weeks ago, we're looking at January of 2022 for, for a go-live date and it's probably, you know, past that at this point. I, uh, I, I, I had a, a few questions from Supervisor White and Supervisor Shutey that, that I addressed during discussions, private discussions with them. That one was about lifespan, uh, from our perspective, the lifespan is perpetual. I mean, I, this does everything we want it to do, frankly. Um, and, and so, uh, you know, you never know about the PBK end of it, but based on their history, uh, and based on, you know, the, the protections that we've tried to build into this, uh, we think it's a very, very long-term arrangement that we're looking for. We've confirmed with IT, no hardware upgrades, upgrades are going to be required to implement this system. Um, there is no contingency, uh, set forth in this contract, but, um, we're not anticipating the need for any contingency, the costs are, look like they're pretty locked in. Uh, there is a, a reference on page 77 of your packet number four that talks about installation on desktops. We actually utilize a lot of laptops and Surface Pros and things like that. That, that reference is actually to, uh, the remote support tool that will be installed. PBK has agreed to utilize pursuant to IT's request, our remote access tool, it, uh, Bangar, I think it's now called Beyond Trust, um, but that was something they, PBK agreed to. So that's the, the thing that will be installed on our stuff, um, and it will be installed by IT. It won't be installed by, uh, uh, PBK. So, you know, IT will install it wherever they, they feel like they need it and wherever we need them to. Their Supervisor White had a question about, uh, whether we would have assigned personnel from PBK to provide support after go-live and to resolve any issues we had after that. Uh, PBK and John Kitzmiller can confirm this, they are going to provide the same technician, uh, who takes us to go-live, they will provide him, uh, to our exclusive access for eight weeks after the go-live date. So, um, that, we're confident that will be sufficient to resolve any, any issues that we've got. Um, and I apologize for, for, um, kind of rambling on here, it's, it's a lot. Uh, I, I grossly underestimated the time that I should have requested for this, but, uh, it's important and, and I want you to know how important it is. Um, and I want you to know how much, you know, my office respects the budget process and, and, um, would only put you in this position if, if we felt it was absolutely necessary, which we do in this case.
Thank you so very much for your, uh, thorough explanation of the, uh, program and that, um, I'm most impressed with, uh, the additional functionality that our community, especially victims, will be able to exercise under this program. So, and thanks for your thorough research. Supervisor Giomi, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, um, thanks, Jason. Um, and I, I know you reached out to me and I apologize for not getting back to you, but, um, I, you, you answered most of my questions during your, uh, very thorough presentation and, um, but the thing that popped into my head, uh, as, as you talked about, exp- And but the thing that popped into my head as you talked about exposure from July to November is if we pay more, can we move our spot up?
We have asked that very question. And the answer is-
Kind of a bribe, but it's a legal bribe, right?
Right. We have asked that very question. I mean, we, I, the, we were hoping to go, you know, July 1st obviously as a go-live and we're working toward that and much to our surprise and probably to Carpel's surprise, they just kept getting more and more customers and eventually we get to this November date. And we have, I mean, I just can't say enough about John Kitzmiller and his representation of Carpel. He's extremely responsive and we have his assurance that if there is an opportunity to move up in that, and there may very well be, because, you know, people make promises and aren't able to, you know, complete their promises. There are glitches on the user end of transitions. You know, we have his assurance that if there's any opportunity for us to move up, he'll be in touch with us. But we can't-
But we can't buy our way out.
We can't buy it.
Okay.
We can't buy it.
Well, I've got cousins still in the old country, so there's the other end of the spectrum.
Just as a follow-up to this discussion though, the existing system that you're utilizing will be de-supported, but it does not mean the existing functionality poofs on July 1. What the concern is, is between July 1 and November, potential go-live date with this contract is that something breaks and you have no fix to it, correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It's not like we lose case management on July 1st.
No, that's 100% correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, oh, wait. Supervisor White, you had a question?
I do. Thank you, Jason, for your explanation today. That really did answer most of my questions. I did have one question in regards to a comment you made in your answers to me about data purge for records that you no longer require to keep. What actually happens to those records? And what I'm thinking is the guy that shows up and says, hey, I'm writing a book about this 60-year-old case. Is there any support for that kind of a thing? I know we're not obligated to, but-
Well, and that's the answer is Nevada law provides a specific records retention schedule. We go beyond that. I mean, we've never purged anything from Justware. So you can go back to 90, maybe 2000 and find information about a case. That's a little scary for us because if we got a public records request, you know, we got 20 years of data that we have to pour through. Whereas if we had a purging protocol, we would only have to go back, you know, seven years or something like that. Now, certain cases, murders, child sexual assaults, things like that, you just have to keep forever. So it's not like we're just, you know, throwing stuff away. So the data that we currently have in the Justware system is 1.2 terabytes. The PBK contract allows us to store two terabytes. Now, with BodyCam being fairly recent, you know, that's, you know, that's a different kind of ballgame. And so we want to watch very carefully on that, on that storage amount. And at this point, we are going to explore a purge protocol to try to bring us more in compliance with Nevada law. But we don't have that right now. Now, that could result in that system where the person who got convicted of possession of marijuana in 1960 and for whatever reason wants his record isn't able to get that, at least through our office. But, you know, we, I do want to make sure we stay as close to that two-terabyte limit as we can because going above that limit incurs additional costs. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not.
No, I think you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to be clear for everyone then, the purchase of this system outside of its one-time costs here, we're going to have about a $13,000 annual impact to our budget because of the software maintenance. And then we'll save a little bit on the one system. So anyway, we're going to net about $13,000 is in our annual costs to support this program. So just looking at it, I think we're certainly, for $13,000 a year, I think we're getting a pretty good improved product. But I just want to put that on the record for our finance department, you know, put that in the future box of obligated dollars. So I don't see anyone else, any other questions, Mr. Jones?
Is there any cost savings with this new program? Manpower versus, you know?
Eliminating, eliminating, or the share file system is the only hard cost saving that I can identify to you at this point. And I guess I would say to be continued on that. We have a part-time data entry clerk. We have a part-time discovery clerk. And we need to see this system in place and working. But those are, you know, those are keystrokes. I mean, that's their job. And this system will save us keystrokes. I can't say today whether it will save us enough keystrokes that we can either scale back on our data entry needs or our discovery needs or eliminate potentially those part-time positions altogether. But that is potentially there. But the only hard cost I can identify for you is that share file cost, pretty small.
I do have a comment on that as well. James Underwood, Chief Information Officer, for the record. So the fact that Carpel is storing the data, that 1.2 terabytes of data that we're currently using with Justware would be something that we can eliminate. And of course, there's costs to maintaining that and backing it up over time. I don't have a hard number for you, but that is something that would reduce future requests for additional storage and backup capacity sometime in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Any further questions? I don't see any, then I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the proposed contracts and to authorize the district attorney to execute the contracts on behalf of Carson City.
I second that. I have a motion by Supervisor White and a second by Supervisor Shutey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say, did you have a, all, you guys are fast on the vote. I have a, all, any knows? Nope. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so very much for your discussions. On the next item is for discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a representative member to the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council pursuant to NRS 176.014 for a two-year term. District Attorney Woodbury has recommended Attorney Garrett Pruitt for a two-year term. Does any member of the board have a question? I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve Garrett Pruitt for a two-year term.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item is dealing with UNR's cooperative extension. Lisa Taylor, are you here to take us through this item, please?
Good morning, Lisa Taylor. I'm the extension educator for UNR Extension here in Carson City, and I also work in Story County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you today the results of our needs assessment. Many of you that had already been on last year's supervisor's panel actually had presented and provided some information for us and we're hopeful of gaining more information from those of you who are new for other subsequent research activities. And okay, thanks. The purpose of our discussion today and to explain to you how these assessment results will actually engage other community residents and stakeholders. We definitely had a good sampling of those in our community to provide their input, but we certainly think that there's always more that's needed. We also gained data. It was driven and it will derive our programs and activities. We have already been using them, but we are working on a special publication that also will share more information for others, especially in our community that might benefit. And then it does guide our priorities for those of us who are your staff members here in our local area. We did use a mixed methods design, and I will tell you that our needs assessment is done every five to seven years. But we do do focus group as well as issue research regularly depending upon the need. And if there is something that you feel we need to be doing more research in, we definitely can focus in that direction. We did use a convergent parallel design, which means that we were not only collecting survey information, but we were also doing those investigations and discussions with each of you as the primary stakeholders. And then we also, in the survey, we talked person to person about people's participation. We did put information in the newspapers. We had online media promotion activities. We put them on listservs and we did have key stakeholder links. You all had helped us here in, for the city to actually put it on your website. And then we did have 28 specific interviews that also were very critical in the design method. Our survey details, the average age of our participant, if you look at the top of the screen, is 51. We had 150 participants, 65% which were female and 33% which were male. And the predominant race was white Caucasian that participated, followed by two or more races. We had Hispanic, we had Asian, we had American Indian. But we did not have quite as much participation from all of those individuals who might be diverse. And we would love to have that happen more concertedly and we'd focus on that in the future. And our population average, just as a comparison, is listed below. NRS Statute 549.010 guides extensions, activities and programs here in this state. And it does identify the six areas of agriculture, community development, health and nutrition, horticulture, natural resources and personal and family development, all of which we do programs and activities across the region and the state. And of course, the thing to remember is you don't only have those of us, the five of us who are here in Carson City that are at the office, but you have all the individuals that are extension people across the state, especially our specialists. So whether it's specialty crops or whether or not it's looking at abuse and neglect-related research information that we're collecting for enhancement of family training and activities or it's looking at our Grow Your Own programs. All those individuals that lead those programs are also those that are providing services and support in our area. When you do have a chance to look at our publication, you'll notice that we have graphics that provide all things that we tried to gather in one place. And so this is just an example of how that graphic will appear in that individual process. But the findings actually say that number one, in agriculture, we have three neat, specific needs that we think are primary for anyone, including extension, to focus on. Number one being responsible chemical use. Number two, looking closely at local food quality and availability. And third, beekeeping and also the generation of honey. And examples of those topics actually looked at the, when you're looking at the screen, the bottom in support of that would be technical assistance that we normally provide. We do regularly, even as of yesterday, I was training someone in food preservation-related activities. He actually wants to pickle cucumbers. And so we were working together hand in hand for him to do that. But also we work with traditional farmers and ranchers and certainly urban gardeners. Another area that is critical is common development needs, increasing community involvement, building those collaborations and certainly helping with community growth, which also has come up as significant in the study. And then we're looking at quality of life being improved certainly by the types of activities that help with that collaboration. And youth development activities, 4H and FFA came up very significantly in the information. When we think about health and nutrition needs, access to nutritious foods was the highest priority. And whether that's looking at our community gardening activities or it's looking at specifics in how to help others provide more food at food banks and other areas, such as our senior center, those are critical aspects that we had, that had been prioritized. Food on a budget as well as fitness and exercise, which we do on a regular basis, are also areas that we have been focusing on. Another one that we're certainly going to be doing more work with is eliminating food waste and definitely preserving water quality. In the area of horticulture, drought tolerant and low water use landscaping, I do a lot of advice in that area on a regular basis when I get calls from individuals coming into the area, especially from other states and specifically from the east, they have a more difficult time understanding our saline soils. We are looking also at pollinator gardens and habitats. And though we've done some work in that direction, we are actually going to be doing a beekeeping project in coordination with the former person that was in my role, Lindsay Trichester. She's actually now a beekeeper and so she's going to be doing some local training for us. And so we work together on a regular basis. We also are looking at genetically modified organisms. GMO issues are very important. And we're also trying to prevent that wildlife, wildfire prevention activities are critical to our process. In natural resource areas, I did mention just a moment ago wildfire prevention education. We have a whole staff of individuals out of the Washoe County office that work with us to help with that education information. And maintaining water quality and pollution prevention is actually one that we're focusing on right now with a natural resource-related curriculum that we're developing for children as well as adults. And then we're looking at how to best look at preservation of green open space and agricultural spaces. This past year, we've planted with volunteers 40 trees, most of which are in public areas. And so we're just trying to do that in a small way, but build that with regard to also inviting children to participate in those activities. And we have been doing a lot of STEM education-related activities, which was a high priority. We have a STEM educator on our staff and he does a regular STEM education program, not only with after-school, but certainly in-school activities and programs. So we have him. And then I do belong to the state STEM network. So we're working hand in hand to try to increase that education across our area. One other key factor is aligning our K-12 curriculum so that our children can not only see the potential of how valuable their education is now, but how post-secondary education can be advantageous for some individuals that feel that that's their right goal and process. So with a full breadth of understanding of that, people can make those choices for their children as well as the children can make those decisions themselves. So we are working towards that activity and process and expanding that area. So the thing to remember about this survey is that, and the interviews, is that the participants most closely aligned with three of our areas, community development, number one, health and nutrition and natural resources as the third area. And so as we look towards that, we have to consider the information in that light. And with those stakeholder interviews, I remember Supervisor Giomi talking with me on the phone. And one of the things he talked about was the community assets, the tremendous amount of things that we have- amount of things that we have in our community, and how critical they are to think about, not only to help people be aware of what those assets are, but how to best use them. And residents' positive community attributes. The individuals who talked with me said for sure that our residents have so many skills and talents, and they bring so much that many communities do not have. And then, as we look at the fact that many of our citizens actually are consumers requiring services, and that our community is providing many of those, and that's why so many people are attracted to our area. Now, there are also implications of population and workforce growth based on the fact that our area has those resources, but they are becoming more limited as more people come into our communities, many of which may be using resources rather than providing some of those additions. And there is very important infrastructure requirements that our communities have to address, and so we cannot forget whether it's the roads, the bridges, the sewers, the fire protection, all the services that are critical for individuals that live in a 55,000 person community. And then the implications of offering a breadth of educational opportunities, those are the things that the University of Nevada Reno here are to be making sure that we're doing. There are some quotes, and I just mentioned to you, whether it's being open to nutrition programs, and we do a lot of this already, but we're continuing to advance fresh fruit and vegetables. That's one of the key areas that we do programs in, trying to do education and drought tolerant-related education for plants and trees. Or it's really looking at the fact that maybe our community has many resources, and how can you differentiate and support some of the needs that aren't yet being filled? And I'd mentioned to you that this actual study, we did quantitative survey-related matters, but there was three different components where we were actually talking and working with information outside the actual survey. So we had to interpret that information in order to best identify everything that was being offered. So when we look at the priorities, it did come up that youth programming, specifically 4H, for extension, could be a critical component that they felt we should be continuing with and to strengthen. Also, family and parenting education, gardening, having the potential of master gardener training, actually looking at how we can best help people grow plants and trees, and certainly be a partner with wildlife, and certainly looking at water quality. Those all things came into natural resource preservation. And then we have food preparation, nutrition and food availability, again, exercise and wellness, which is something we also already talked about, and urban food production. We already talked about collaborations, involvements, and relations related to the community. And another key area that we're going to be enhancing even further is water, water quality, water pollution prevention, and water conservation. Now, we can't do all these things ourselves, so that's why we work in collaboration with other groups and partners. We are looking at more volunteer recruitment, and we now have a volunteer specialist that will be working with us, not only to develop the right systems to help our volunteers succeed, but also to make sure that in that recruitment effort, we're being responsible to individuals who step forward and help us. And you might remember that the Carson City Fair Board is also our partner, and we have had a fair in the past. We didn't have one last year, but they definitely are working to try to see how they could have both virtual and potentially in-person safe events and activities in the coming summer. I can't speak for them, but we do our efforts to help them. We also have Juntos, which in the education and services area, we have been introducing, and that's for Together We Will Learn. And that program is focused on Hispanic children and their families, and have best to help them access the best in education and opportunities for employment. And then you'll notice that we have also our community garden. We are doing strength and conditioning for seniors. And definitely, we continue to do our radon education program. And again, this is February, the month where you can get a free radon kit, and if you haven't already gotten one, I hope you'll stop by. And we certainly have horticulture-related matters, and we are doing a lot of integrated pest management training for those that actually do insecticide-related matters to treat problems, whether it's noxious weeds or pests. And we are looking at the Capital City Farm Days again this spring. We're trying to work with our partners to see, again, how we can offer that, whether it's in-person or virtually. So I want to thank you all for your time and efforts to let me come and speak with you today. I'm happy to answer any questions, and certainly, we couldn't have done this assessment without your support and the efforts of your staff, and certainly, the people that I work with on a daily basis here in the community.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Really appreciate your presentation. Supervisor Giomi, do you have a question?
Yeah, Lisa, thanks again as well, just reiterate what Mayor Bagwell said. You know, I'm interested in, when we spoke, gosh, I guess it's been over a year, over a year now. The aspect of community, to me, is so vital because I think it's such an asset in our community that I can't think of any other county that has it, and that's the fact that we can really be unified here. And even if you think of our neighboring counties, maybe, you think of Douglas County, which probably has a lot of community unity, but then you forget that there's a whole aspect of the county that is separate from Carson Valley, and that's a whole separate group, and they really, they often don't mesh. And even you think of Story County, it's the same thing, is you've got, you know, two or three distinct communities. But for Carson, we really can get behind the one community vision because we're in one valley, we're in one location, we have one city, and it's, I think that really is an asset. The point, I guess, I want to make is that I think it's critical to get diverse input because of that. And as I looked at the report about the respondents, and you called it out, and you know, I'm not, I'm certainly not being critical, but I'm more interested in, you know, having city staff work with you and finding ways to make sure that we are reaching that diversity in our community. Because, because I think it's critical, because otherwise, I think the results of not doing that are, we begin to get separation, and I don't think, you know, we don't want to lose that, from my perspective. So I think it's vital to find ways to work together to do that, and guess what I'm saying is, we're interested, if you have thoughts, on helping us get there.
I love that. We do have the Hispanic Outreach Coordinator that works with us 20 hours a week, and so we do have, at least for the Hispanic community, a variety of different programs. However, it is reflective of the assessment that we didn't have the response that we should have.
Right.
So I'm saying that upfront.
Yeah.
But we are doing, we have planned focus groups, as well as another, a related survey in the next year, so that we really can focus, and that we do have other, certainly diverse audiences that we should also impact. So we're committed to doing that.
That's great. I was trying to find, I mean, even, even the males were, you know, a one-third to two-thirds ratio with, with females, so anyway.
We like to do surveys.
I certainly wasn't calling you out. I was just, I was just, you know, looking to you because I, you know, I think in the past, this board has been very upfront about trying to get the community involved and communicating with the community, and quite frankly, it's a struggle. It's, it's, you know, it's one of the questions that we asked Supervisor Jones when we were querying him on, to come on the board, and it's a challenge in a community that doesn't have a daily newspaper anymore. It's, it's a challenge in a community to get messages out, and, and we see it often in controversial development things that, that come forward, or just development in general. So I guess it's, it's a shared world we're communicating, and any thoughts you have as an educator and whatever resources the college can bring that, that can help us as a city do that, you know, hopefully we'll both benefit. Thank you.
I so agree with you, and we're going to be, again, just making sure that the next time, we work more concertedly in a broader direction.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Jones? Stan, can you turn your, thank you.
I had it on once. Anyhow, I think a good example is our B far, B place behind the college, I mean, the hospital, you know, the chamber, Southwest Gas, and the hospital worked together on that, and that's a great, that's a great little facility up there. I don't know if everybody's seen it or not. I'm anxious to go back this year and see how many plants survived the first year, et cetera. But that's a good example of what you were alluding to, Stacy, that people can work together, and it really was a successful program.
Well, the exciting part was, because of the Division of Forestry's support.
Right.
Those trees hopefully will be thriving, and they say that that mental health of looking at growing things can be as important, but we've, we're definitely putting our fingers crossed that they all survive the winter.
All right. Thank you again so very much. This is a non-action item, so we'll move on now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is 13A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Determination That Triumph Electric Company, Inc., is the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and Whether to Award Contract Number 20300228, Production Wells Permanent Emergency Generators Project to Triumph Electric Company, Inc., for a total not to exceed amount of $605,000. Does any member of the board have a question on this proposed contract? Mr. White? Mr. Stuckey?
Just, I guess, some follow-up questions off of questions that I sent out, and I realize there were quite a lot of questions. I'm curious why the real wide-ranging cost on the individual generators, on page 153, line, on that spreadsheet there, lines 2, 7, 12, and 17, call out for the purchase of a generator and a transfer switch, yet those, those prices are substantially different from one another.
Yes, Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, good question. Each of those sites have different power components that they need to, some of them are pumping more water or more sewage, and so the generator size, I think, is different depending on the size, and so I think obviously a larger generator is a higher cost, and that's the reason for the, the differences in price.
Right. So when I went back and looked at the support material for the planning commission, it looks like at the client, planning commission, while there's four generator sites, there was just two generators talked about at the planning commission, a C-13 and a C-9. So I'm still kind of curious why the, if there's only two specific generators, why
Give me one second. They might have gone to the planning commission at two different planning commissions, so there might have been another generator discussed. But I, you know, I don't know the, all the details, and I don't have the project manager on the line as far as the differences of the transfer switch. I know there might be some complexities that are associated specifically to those sites that might cause a cost difference, but yeah, I don't know about why the wide range.
And I think something that just came to my mind very recently, something that I've had to deal with in the past, I'm curious what sort of hazardous spill containment provisions have been made for this, these generators. I mean, you have coolant and diesel fuel, pretty large quantities sitting there. So I'm sure that's built in. I didn't see any discussion of it here. I'm just curious.
Yes, so we, I know we have a program and a protocol that we follow, obviously, if those things happen through the different divisions, whether water, sewer, or whoever's taking care of these specific sites, I know we have those protocols in place. I don't think, as far as during the construction, I'm not sure if that was discussed in the actual construction documents, as far as spill containment during construction, but I know we do have a pretty detailed procedure at the city to help with those things if they arise.
And one of my questions Darren indicated, he was working on getting the information. I'm wondering, do you have the information on the frequency and duration of power outages at these well sites?
So we did put a request into NV Energy. We did not receive yet, but I, we did provide a response. I know, kind of, based off, you know, recollections of our staff as far as what kind of durations and the frequency of events, and, you know, typically, it depends on the site. Obviously, the distribution grid for NV Energy varies in how it impacts different areas, but we do see it, we actually had our Sugarloaf site this week, we had a, we, our experience of power outage, it's resolved now, but they do happen, you know, six, six times or so a year, depending on the different locations, anywhere from an hour to longer. But obviously, they can have a very devastating effect on our water system if our pumps aren't operating for a long period of time and we're draining our water tanks, so.
And we do have 30 well sites that we pump from. How much water do we keep on hand at any given moment?
We have, I mean, I don't, it depends on the, the specific water zone throughout the city and the water tanks that feed those zones. I don't have the information off my top of my head, but, I mean, there's, there's good supply there, but I mean, if we experience something without a generator, and it's during, you know, summer months or whatever, I mean, it drains pretty fast, that supply. I mean, I, I think we gave you a story of an event back in 2013, it was a graduation day, and there was a Mylar balloon that flew up into the power lines and shut off the city, the power on the west side, and it drained our tanks pretty quick. We were pretty concerned, and that was only a couple hours, so, you know, we look at these generators as a pretty big deal, pretty big project from a resiliency standpoint for Public Works.
Thanks.
Supervisor Giomi?
I can tell you in that 2013 instance that we, Fire Department called regional partners to stage water tenders along the whole west side because of that, because it got beyond my comfort level as fire chief when those numbers were dropping down. To your point, Supervisor White, regarding the containment, those, those generators, I'm familiar with the generators, they meet code requirements for built-in secondary containment. So the systems themselves meet code requirements for, for fuel secondary containment. It's a double-wall tank or a triple-wall tank, so I don't remember exactly. Can you just cover briefly, Dan, something that I think maybe not all of our board is aware of, but, but I think is critical when we're making changes to city infrastructure, particularly those that are in neighborhoods? The efforts that you guys go through to talk to neighbors about these things so that they're aware of them ahead of time, not just the standard planning commission notices, but the work that you've done to do that? If you could just briefly cover that, I think it'd be informational for them.
Yeah, no, that's, thanks Supervisor Jones, that's a great question. Yeah, I mean, as you mentioned, obviously, there's just built-in requirements with, we were required to get a special use permit, built-in requirements with those planning commission noticing. As you mentioned, I mean, some of these projects, you know, we are in the heart of neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that the, and sometimes there's tweaks we can do that maybe as Public Works we're not observing because we don't live in those neighborhoods every day. So what we've done, actually, with all of these generator sites, is we sent out mailers additionally to the planning commission mailers, but we sent out letters to the close-impacted neighborhoods. Some of these were getting a easement from a property owner, so obviously, there's coordination directly with that property owner. But we have had multiple site meetings onsite, talking with, in one case, I think, well, three over on Winnie Lane, there was, you know, five or six people there. On that specific one, we were able to do some screening things as far as with landscaping that was requested by the, the surrounding property owners. So those things are really valuable, and it's something we take pretty serious, and we're really making a large effort here, particularly over the last year, to really bolster that outreach and to make sure that, like I said, there, there are some minor things that's, you know, from a cost standpoint, aren't that big of a deal, and it's just, it makes sense to do it the right way, and we can, we can get those into our design before we go out and construct them.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to award the contract as presented.
Have a second. I have a motion by Supervisor Shutey and a second by Supervisor Giomi. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item number four.
We're going to move on to agenda item number 14A. Mr. White, do you have a disclosure?
I do. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. This agenda item concerns a proposed lease of city property to the Children's Museum of Northern Nevada. I have provided labor and professional services to the museum in the past on various projects, all unpaid and on a volunteer basis, and may again in the future. I have also made charitable monetary donations to the museum and I am friends with the executive director of the museum. However, I do not serve in any official capacity and do not have a fiduciary duty to the museum in neither my volunteer work with the museum or my friendship with the executive director affect my independent of judgment on this matter before the board. I make this disclosure in the interest of full transparency, but I do not have a qualifying conflict of interest and will vote on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. White. This item is for discussion and possible action regarding a proposed lease at 813 North Carson Street to the Children's Museum of Northern Nevada, a nonprofit Nevada corporation, to be used for charitable or civic purposes pursuant to NRS, at the rate of a dollar per year for three years and five months, commencing on February 4th, 2021, and terminating on June 30th, 2024, with an option to request renewal for an additional three-year term commencing on July 1, 2024, and terminating on June 30th, 2027. We do a lot of these, but if anyone has a question, um, then I'll accept a motion for approval.
I move to approve the lease as proposed.
Have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Supervisor White and a second by Supervisor Shutey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item is 15A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding an Application to Remove $420,235.82 in uncollectible accounts receivable from the records of the ambulance fund. We do this again twice a year. Not, not really much we can do. But if anyone has any questions, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the, uh, application.
Second.
The motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We're now going to move on to item number 15B, which is the cost allocation plan. Ms. Russell, will you take us through this?
This is everything you ever wanted to know about finance? No.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Just had to get all set up here. So, um, we hire a third-party consultant to come in and review and allocate the actual fiscal year 2020 expenses. Uh, I did ask Marshall to join us today, so she should be on the WebEx. If you have any questions, have Marshall. The idea of this is that the general fund provides a lot of services that the special revenue and enterprise funds use throughout the year. HR, IT, DA's office, finance, treasury. So if, um, we were to, um, the water, pitch the water company alone to its standalone entity, it would have to have all of these services. So it would cost these entities more money. So the idea is to allocate, um, those expenses and bring the money back to the general fund for these services. So what Marshall has done is really the top section of this spreadsheet, uh, the gray and white lines here. She's put that together. That is the actual fiscal year 20 allocation. And then as you come down, we, uh, we adjust it for fiscal year 22 because the plan is to use the allocation in the fiscal year 22 budget. So we add a little bit for merit increases because we expect, um, you know, employees to get raises in the next couple of years. We actually removed Public Works altogether because those were the projects they worked on in fiscal 20. And so we have Darren do an allocation of what he believes he's going to work on in fiscal year 22. It's one of the largest numbers. That's the engineering department in the general fund. So it makes sense for Darren to split out, um, what he thinks he's going to be working on in 22. And I'm sorry, Darren's Public Works Director. Uh, and then we have a little true-up, um, that Ms. Bagwell added several years ago to true-up that, um, allocation that Darren does. So at the bottom gray, what we do is we look at, um, the estimate we made two years ago compared to what Marshall gave us this year. And we do a little true-up of that allocation. This year, for the first time, Darren's estimate was a little high, so we're going to be giving some money back to the general fund. Uh, in total, on page two, the allocation, um, between last year and this year went down by about $25,000. So it's, it's usually pretty consistent from year to year. If you have any questions, concerns, I want to say a lot of you asked some really great questions and really dug into this, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank Pam Ganger for putting the information together because we implemented the new system January 20th. So she had to figure out actual payroll out of two systems for different departments and put it together by person so they could do the allocation. It was quite the, um, the exercise. Um, and of course, Marshall for all her hard work.
Does anybody, I don't see any raised hands. Did you have an opportunity to find out historically why on the district attorney's cost allocation we are removing the prosecution team from the allocation methodology?
Um, I believe Nancy sent an email to the DA's office. Um, and I don't have that in front of me. I'm sorry, Nancy.
And, and if we don't have the answer right now, you can get it, get it back to me for a future discussion, if you don't have it yet.
When I talked to the DA, it was, um, the reasoning behind eliminating the prosecution is that that doesn't involve performing a service for another department. So therefore, they wouldn't allocate those costs out across the city.
So they, they don't feel there's any with alternative sentencing? Or they just don't think there's any crossover? And so do we not charge for anything for like the share of the fleet? It's not for them to allocate out, it's the other way around? That are the prosecuting team counted in insurance and fleet? And I'm more interested in-
There's a little bit in there.
There's a little.
But like for workers' comp, we have outside counsel because we have specialists, so it's not really the DA's office that does a whole lot with workers' comp. I think we have, um, outside counsel for water too because it's a very specialized, um, function. So, um, and I think Jason also mentioned that he was going to look at the juvenile and maybe not allocate that either because a lot of that is just, um, you know, outside people, not really city functions that they're helping with.
Okay. And we can look at that again to refine maybe for next year and really have a discussion on the, uh, district attorney allocation.
Definitely.
That would be wonderful. I don't see anyone else with a raised hand, so I'll accept a motion.
Actually, I, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. White. He just now did it.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah, I would like to address this board and, and make you all aware that my comments are not meant to disparage or disrespect staff. But what we have here is a 204-page financial plan that we pay a consultant to write. Each department spends between 40 and 80 hours telling the consultant what to write. So we go through this process to find what, what it costs to run the city when staff already knows what it costs to run this city. Yet we do not charge the Parks Department for water. Water is an absolute quantifiable and hard cost to the taxpayers of Carson City. So if Parks is not paying for its water, where is the real incentive to not waste water? What this creates is a policy that uses taxpayer funds for a circular payment method of paying ourselves to do the work we should just be doing because it's our charge to do so. I reviewed the referenced code, NRS Code 354613. And that code is, does not say that we shall do this. NRS 354 gives us the option. It says we may do this cost allocation plan. The Board of Carson City Supervisors sets policy of whether we do or do not do this. This is on us as a Carson City Board of Supervisors. In my view, this is an incredible waste of time and money and we should stood, we should put a stop to it today. And with that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Um, let's have a discussion. I'm not ready for a motion based on that discussion. So the cost allocation plan is not, to me, a plan that describes our expenditures. The cost allocation plan is the methodology that the general fund recovers the, the tasks that it does to the water fund. It's not sewer anymore, the WRF, um, enterprise funds, uh, grants. Without a cost allocation plan, there would be no recovery from any of those funds. Are you suggesting that the general fund should just pay, provide all those services and not charge federal grants and not charge the water enterprise funds?
I'm suggesting that we know what those different departments cost to operate and we put that money in their, in their budget and let them operate.
It's a general fund, it's the opposite. It's a general fund recovery. So are you suggesting we take human resources and put one person in each of these departments instead of? I guess it goes to, do you want desegregation? You want us to send the people to the particular departments? Since isn't it more efficient to run it out of a centralized zone? So you have continuity and then you charge it its share of what it used? I guess that's part of the discussion for me is activities that I believe should be centralized are things like human resources because I want it to be handled across the city the same. I don't want the person in Hu, in the road fund doing it different than the person at the sheriff's office. So I guess it's a bigger discussion. It, it's not as simple as just saying, put the money in their budget and give them their human resource person, give them their payroll person, give them a person that does finance. This is how we, everybody gets their own fleet mechanic. Everybody gets, I, I just don't see it that way.
Well, I think it's strictly a difference in philosophy about how we should be operating. And I, I, I would disagree on the level of everybody would get their own fleet mechanic. You know what it costs to run the fleet? Put that money in the fleet and go. Just a difference in philosophy. And I'm not making any suggestion how to run the city other than I don't think we should be doing cost allocation.
Does any other member have a, want to weigh in? Supervisor Giomi?
You know, I think the, the, there, um, you know, Supervisor White is correct in the sense that this board sets policy on how we do cost allocation, which is the exact agenda item before us. And I think over the years, we have changed, and you brought up the water issue. Over the years, we have changed how we look at that water issue. And we had a policy discussion, or a previous board, I say we as the collective, had a policy discussion to, to not include that in the cost of doing business for various reasons at the time. I think it was probably done 10 or 12 years ago. So I, I find that the method that the city does cost allocation, and perhaps this is because I, I worked with it on the inside. I, I can tell you that as a department director, I didn't spend anywhere close to 40 hours a year working on the cost allocation plan within the department that I managed. So I, you know, I don't think it's that complicated a process. But what it does for me as a policymaker is it gives me the opportunity to look at those enterprise funds as businesses and see what it would cost for the city to provide that service. So I, I find it, um, I find it valuable. I think we make adjustments. You heard, uh, Sheri talk about the true-up adjustment that, um, then Supervisor Bagwell suggested was put in. We had a discussion today about the district attorney's office. So I, I find the cost allocation valuable because it gives us a snapshot as a policymaker to see what it is costing the water group, um, to provide water to our citizens. I think if we took that money, I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we would do that. The ratepayers then would not be paying for the water. It would be our general fund that would be paying for those services, for the water department. And would we then, I guess logical extension of that is would we then reduce the cost of providing the water because of that? I, I, I don't, I, I don't know how that would work. I, I find the current system functional, personally.
Well, can I say that I think there was a miscommunication? Because the, um, the 40 and 80 hours was meant as, um, the city's time in, in total, not per director. Just, just, just to put that out there.
Thank you for that. Well, I, I think in, in that regard, before we're talking about the cost of water, I, I think cost allocation makes it more complicated in that it's pretty simple for staff to figure out what it costs per gallon of production. And you charge that. Pretty simple. I'm, I'm just, uh, philosophically, I don't see the need for drawn-out, convoluted situations. It could be a lot simpler, that's all I'm saying.
We could, well, there are lots of methodologies. I'm not going to argue with that, um, the process of a cost allocation. You have to document what it is if you're going to do one. I, I think this methodology works well. I think what I use it for is to look and say, okay, how much is the general fund supporting the water fund versus what would the water fund buy that from the general market? That's really what I'm trying to watch is I look to say, all right, the water fund's getting a good deal buying this from the general fund activity. Or if it starts going too high, then I might look to tell the water fund, go and hire your own staff to do these things because it would be less expensive for the rate payer. So I use it as another method to make sure, because we have a financial policy even that cost allocation should not exceed a certain percentage, just like any regular business. You don't want your administrative costs to outweigh the benefit of the services and the stuff. So I look at it for that reason too. But I'm probably a finance and budget person from way back, so I look at lots and lots of details to help me know that the ship is continuing on the right path. And so I use this document for that purpose also, just to, again, make sure our administrative costs are in line with even what a normal business would want to run those types of things with. So I'm comfortable with our methodology, but I certainly understand your position. Does anyone else have any? They're like, I'm too new to know. Yeah, it's hard. It's a, it's a hard, uh, concept for cost allocation.
Well, if I can make a comment, I just really appreciate having met with Sheri and, and, um, because I had questions about how all of this worked and sitting down and explaining it in, in terms of the different businesses and what it would cost each, um, entity if they were to, um, as, as a single entity, take care of all of this versus within the city. So it, it helped alleviate some of my questions. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So anybody else? I'll accept a motion. Who's making one? Mr. Jones?
I move to accept the cost allocation plan for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, for use in preparing the fiscal- for use in preparing the fiscal year 2022 Carson City budget.
I have a motion by Supervisor Jones and a second by Supervisor Giomi. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. I have, um, a no vote by Supervisor White. Motion has carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's fun. Okay, we're gonna-
And thank you for putting up with all my questions.
Sure thing. Is everybody okay if we keep moving on? Yes? Okay. Just want to make sure. So I'm going to go ahead and, um, the next item is 16A, discussion and possible action regarding a proposed interlocal agreement between the Board of Regents and the Nevada System of Higher Education through WNC and Carson City and our Health Department for the Health Department facilities and outreach events for the purpose of providing clinical experience for nursing students through June 30, 2026. And there's no monetary compensation and giving authorization for the city manager to sign the agreement. Does anyone have any questions on this? Then I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement as proposed.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White for approval. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion has carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we're now going to move on to our open agenda item that we do each, uh, in every meeting on our COVID-19. Ms. Paulson, who is going to go first?
I believe either Nikki or Jeannie.
I'll start off. This is, um, Nikki Aker for the record, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. Um, so as far as our contact tracing, 93% of the new cases have been, uh, had successful attempts within 24 hours. So that's within 24 hours, we are, um, getting in touch with those individuals. And, um, our daily cases have decreased, which I'll explain more on that in here in a minute. So from January 17th to the 30th, there were 205 confirmed cases reported in Carson City that represents 42% of the cases in the Quad Counties. There's a, this is a 40% decrease from the previous two weeks. The decrease indicates a, a trend in decreased transmission as well as the decrease in testing, which I'm sure you've all heard, you know, we do have a decrease in testing, um, right now. It's, you know, across the country as we've seen. The daily cases reported based on a seven day average over this two week period was 15. 49% of those cases were female and 51% were male. The average age of our cases is 45 years old. There were seven known hospitalizations among our Carson City cases. 60% of the cases were employed. We've had 12 students that tested positive during this two week period. Of those student cases, 50% attended school during their infectious period. There were also two faculty members that tested positive, one of whom was at school while infectious. Facility-related exposures has decreased dramatically during this period. Community exposures accounted for 54% of the known exposures. Household exposures accounted for 24%. And some additional information on this, an individual can answer yes to more than one exposure type. And because of that transmission trends, they're challenging to track and predict. Carson City Health and Human Services, we continue to promote messages regarding safe practices, social distancing, vaccinations, and, um, testing. And I will let Jeannie talk about vaccination.
Good morning, everyone. Jeannie Freeman for the record, Public Health Preparedness Manager, Quad County COVID Response Coordinator. Uh, this morning, just wanted to give you a little bit of an update about where we are related to vaccinations and some of the staff that we have in place. So this past Monday, we, uh, had 10 FEMA staff, they're called blue shirts, that arrived in Carson City to assist with data entry. They're assisting with making second appointments, they're assisting with the data entry into Web IZ, they're also assisting with data entry out in the field, which has been a blessing. These are 100% paid by FEMA, there is no cost to the city or any other jurisdiction. We have them for at least 30 days, but, uh, the request has been for 120 days for them to extend. This is a similar asset that Washoe County has requested as well as Clark County, and it was offered to us, and we decided to make that request as well. So they have been a good asset to already have in place. And so that you are aware with our data entry, we are caught up with all of our data entry all the way through our events yesterday, so the events that we have today, we will continue to work on, uh, what we are doing. So we are making that 24-hour request that the feds have had, and they give us an extension to 72 hours, and we're making it within the 24 hours at this point in time. So that's a very good place for us to be. It also helps the state with their data because it allows them to show the record that all those doses that we're actually saying we're putting in arms are actually getting into arms, and so when it gets reported up to the federal government, then they can actually see that we're not holding on to doses, and there's no question about where that would look or what's happening. We also received on Monday, we had a team of 10 Health and Human Services, Federal Health and Human Services vaccinators that came into the region to assist us. They're here to help give our staff a break, uh, for the next two weeks, so they're here on 14-day, uh, allocation times. Again, this is a cost that is completely being paid for by the federal government, no cost to the jurisdiction or anything of that sort. The HHS team, I was able to visit with their leaders yesterday, and they had assisted on Monday and yesterday with some events, and they said, wow, you guys have a really smooth running operation, everything seems to be doing really well, you're making our jobs really easy, which is really nice to hear that, because a lot of times, uh, when our federal partners come in, they're coming in because things are broken, and then they're coming in to help fix them, and it was nice for them to be able to say that. They also said they appreciated being in the north and not in the south because down in Clark County, they go to the convention center every day and they see the same view. They like being able to move around in the field in the Quad Counties and see all the beauty and the different things that we have going on in northern Nevada, and to see that there's more to Nevada than what most people think of down in the south. So they've, um, they're staying in Carson City, and so they're residents of ours for the next two weeks, and, and we're taking care of them and stuff as well. As far as shots go, maybe you've heard on the news that people nationwide are struggling with getting their second dose, uh, appointments to get their second dose. We're not having that issue in the Quad County, we take care of that. When they get their first dose, we've already got their second dose scheduled for them, and then we send them reminders related to their appointments and stuff. And then if they somehow didn't get it because it went into their junk email box, then they email us and we communicate with them what their appointment times are. So we already have that set up and we do that. We're looking to expand that to do it right in the field rather than us notifying them of that second dose, but doing a secondary reminder while they're at their appointment for their first dose. So speaking of doses, let's give you some updates about where we are. So to date, uh, Carson City Health and Human Services has received 8,375 doses, first doses of COVID vaccine, and we have received a total of 3,600 second doses. So it's a total of 11,975 administered first doses. We've administered 7,617 first doses. Second doses, we've administered 1,677, which shows us administering 9,294. Our first doses on hand, 758. Every single one of those will be administered today at our last first dose event for this week. Second doses on hand, 1,923. All of those will be administered through our events that are scheduled for next Tuesday, which is what they ask us to do so that we can get our allocation in place, which means that we will have zero doses on hand when we are done with next Tuesday. So we will get our next, um, shipment next Monday or Tuesday, which will allow us to open up events for what we have. So we do anticipate opening up a couple of events today that we'll be able to have now that we have confirmation of locations, which is always that challenge of what we look for, but we continue to move around and be able to do that. So we're excited about the fact that we're caught up with data entry, that we have the ability to give our staff a little bit of a break with having some federal staff in place, and that we are getting every dose that's possible in there. And we're just really grateful for the partnerships that we've had with agencies in the community. We have a lot of healthcare providers, um, I should say a handful, maybe not a lot, but we have a handful of healthcare providers who are also helping with administering those first and second doses. And again, it's just, it's a community effort, it's a partnership across the board. So any questions you have for me?
So I don't have a question, just a general comment. The public is listening. Um, I want to start with commending the Quad County. I had a discussion with the state's Health and Human Services team, and they were just raving about the great job that the Quad County is doing, uh, that we're following the rules and the playbook. And I know for some, they want us to push harder or to go outside the lines. But I look at it as how proud I am of all of you for following the lines because it's the same thing that we're asking all of our businesses and residents to do, is to social distance 25% capacities. And so I, I really want the people in Carson City to recognize that we're doing absolutely everything we can to have Carson City positioned to take more doses. And so just like you said, it's, it's nice to see that the state level, the federal level, that everyone is recognizing that we're doing it right. So I just want everyone listening to know, if they give us, I, I will tell you, I begged for 8,000 doses a week. I said, let's just give it to us because we're doing everything right, and I promise we'll get them in people's arms, and let's get the Quad Counties vaccinated, because the more you can get regions vaccinated, then they can concentrate on those that need more help in other areas. And so I just want to go on the record to commend you. And then I also want to thank the public. Uh, we are putting together great volunteer teams to be able to help us carry through the long haul to, to get this done. And so I want to thank Nikki. We did a training, uh, last Saturday, so that is Team One, and I want you to know, Team One gets it done. Um, but they, I'm just impressed with the people in our community that want to help. They know it's going to take us all to get this done, and so the fact that they'll step up to the plate and offer up four, eight, 10 hours a week that they'll help do the paperwork. So Nikki, did you want to tell everyone about your volunteer coordinator so that the public that's listening would know her name if she called, because it's not going to be the mayor calling you anymore? I've been, uh, doing the spreadsheet and the stuff on that, but do you want to tell us who the new person is or anything?
So, um, with the volunteer coordinator, we're on Plan D of trying to figure that out. So, um, Jeannie and I had a conversation this morning, and we, um, need to talk with the individual, and then I will definitely pass her name on and, um-
Okay, because I just want the public not to be expecting. I've been fielding, and I'm so honored to do it, I really am. I've done all the emails, all the spreadsheets, talked to the people. Again, our community is incredible that when we need help, the volunteers step up to the plate to do it. So, um, just as soon as you can, even if you let me know, so I can get that message out to the whole group email for that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and I also would really like to thank the community and, um, and all of you for your support, um, the community. Um, you know, we have a lot of people coming to us that want to help. Um, and it's, um, you know, we have volunteers in Carson, in the other, um, counties as well, and people are being, they're very generous, wanting to assist in any way that they can. The healthcare providers, um, want to help get those shots in the arms, and we are very grateful for all the people that are coming forward. Um, just my, my communication to the community is we are trying to put together a very robust volunteer management program, and we will be reaching out, and this is for the long haul. This isn't going away next month. So you, as we've reported, you can see we have, that we're caught up right now, we have a lot of other help, but we're going to need the community members in the future. And I just want to thank everybody in the community that's coming forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I just, uh, want to reiterate some of the same things that, that Lori said. You know, early on, when the vaccine first rolled out, and I know you guys experienced this, I got a lot of frustrated calls about people who couldn't get in, and, um, I said, you know, look, this is, this is, you just can't appreciate the complications behind what our folks have to do to get, um, needles in arms, but it, so over the last couple of weeks now, I, I've had phone calls from people who, um, one person in particular was in tears just because she was so excited that she got shot. Um, and I almost get emotional myself talking about it because she, she's one of those people that has been isolating herself, and it's, it's funny, you have, and all of us here probably have heard from people across the spectrum, people at the one end who will never get a shot because they don't think any of this is real, and people at the other end who are wearing Level B protection when, you know, they go to get the newspaper, and, and I'm, I'm only slightly exaggerating. And, and this person was towards that other end of the spectrum, but, um, she just feels like she can get her life back or start to get her life back. So you're, you're making incredible, um, headway just getting those people peace of mind. And I know you know that, I just want you to hear it from me because those people are coming to me, and I'm sure they're coming to you.
Thank you for that. You're, um, making me emotional, too. Um, we do hear from those people, um, you know, that they are, they're in tears that they're so happy. And then we hear also from the others that are having still a difficult time with making appointments. And, um, my communication to them is continue looking at the pharmacies for appointments on our website. I know that, um, a glitch in our system right now is that it says that there's no appointments until June now. Um, that is a glitch in the system. Um, that means that all events that we have scheduled at that time within the system are full, and continue looking because we're adding events.
You know, I would add just one other thing to that. I, I, I tell people, um, schedule yourself wherever you can, look everywhere. Don't just look at the state website, don't just look at the city, look to your provider. Call your provider, your primary care physician's office, call that group there, if, if they're participating, they're scheduling. Um, and even if you are not a provider, um, or, or look to community groups that, uh, you know, community groups that are getting vaccine for nothing are obligated to give vaccines to the general public. They're obligated to do that. So reach out to those organizations and, um, try and schedule your appointment. You don't necessarily, um, have to be a patient there, it depends on which organization certainly, but, um, but probably more importantly, um, if you put your name down in two places, please, if you get the vaccine, take your name off the other place so you don't take a spot up for somebody. I can't emphasize that enough, but I, I know people who have their name down in two or three spots, and I tell them, please, 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 once you get that needle in your arm, immediately take your name off those other spots. They'll get filled, just don't forget to do that. Um, because we don't, we, we won't, and I know you feel this way, waste vaccine. And I know the organization that, that I work for has made that statement as well. We are not, you know, at that point, you'll find an arm, right? So, um, yeah, I can't emphasize that enough. Thank you.
So I just have a question. I've, I'm wondering on the workforce essential lane, can, are we through the education component for us? Are we getting ready to move into the community support? I'm just wondering how close we are on that lane.
Yeah, we are, um, not quite through the education piece just yet. We have collected the data from the schools, we've prevented, we've provided an assessment to the state for permission to be able to move forward, that is being reviewed at this point in time. So we do anticipate, hopefully in the near future, that we'll be able to make that announcement about that, um, keeping in mind that that next sub-bucket is a very large sub-bucket in the Quad County region. It's an extremely large bucket, so it will take some time, and we want to not just make- So it will take some time and we want to not just make that announcement because we also are not wanting to have that thrust, the 70-plus out of getting vaccinated. So we need to make sure that we're able to roll that out in a way that makes sense, that we're able to serve that subgroup of that prioritization lane, but then also make sure that we're still making progress with our 70-plus and not having them get scooted to the side because that's not the intention. These are supposed to be concurrent lanes and moving along at the same time. And so we want to make sure that that's done well and not just a free-for-all that then creates problems for us.
Jeannie, once you, once you hit that next lane, and I know we've, we've talked about this in our organization, have you guys discussed potentially instead of it making where they come to you, you go to them? In other words, where you, and, and give me a category in that second.
So like you're saying, you would go to the food shelter and say, let me just get all of you at this shelter.
Yeah. I mean, is there any discussion? I, I, I don't know if that makes sense for you to do it that way because then you're, you're going to where that employer is and you can get that group of employees. And, and I, I get the numbers of 10, and so maybe you combine a couple of, you know, organizations or whatever the case may be. But it seems to me that once you start getting to employment-based vaccines, whether that be food service workers at Smith's or, or food production workers at, at the New Life Bakery, it seems that it makes more sense to go to a closed event so that you're, you get that whole business and it's like, okay, check, you're off the list while you're keeping the public one open, to your point, for those people 70 and up. Or maybe when we kick it down to, you know, 65 and up. So I guess I'm just asking that question.
Yes.
And yes, you probably would need resources to do that. And, and again, I want to reiterate, from my perspective, this, this body has to act as a group. But from my perspective, if you hit that point and you need resources from us, and I'm talking about financial resources, bring it forward. Because I, I, I don't, you know, I'm one of those people that thinks that if we don't get a significant number of people vaccinated, economically, we're going to struggle in this country. So I think if we have to spend some money to make that happen, I, I am willing to do that.
So to answer your question, yes, we are in the process of building our strike teams so that we can be able to do that. And we will continue to do our pop-up roadshow type of situation where we will do closed points of dispensing, or pods as we call them. And we'll be doing that. It may not be going to each employer. It may be setting up in a community and having a closed pod for those who, who are eligible under that categorization to be able to come and get that, not having them all come to Carson for the quad counties, going and doing that type of movement. But that's how it will likely be more set up, similar to how we did it when we got our first doses of the Pfizer and we kept closed pods just for those who were 70-plus so that we could give a boost to that group. And so yes, that is part of our plan and what we're working through and how we can have multiple teams out in the region at the same time doing those types of events.
Great. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Nope. Well, you guys, thank you. Oh, Ms. Paulson. I'm like, ooh, far left. Got to look at this.
Sorry, I was a little slow on the drive. I didn't have my glasses on so I couldn't see the button to push. So I just wanted to add a little bit to what Supervisor Giomi said about the vaccines and the residents being thankful actually have a card for Nikki and her staff from a resident over 70 that was so thankful and impressed with Nikki and her staff for providing the vaccine, so.
You guys really are doing a great job. And like you said, I think it's not you. When people are frustrated, remember it's fear, that people are afraid. So please don't take it personal. I wonder if you have any idea, do you think you're seeing the vast majority of over 70 want the vaccine? It's the group that truly wants it versus, do you know in the education lane, was there like a 50, 60% that took it and maybe 30, 40 not taking it? I'm kind of interested.
Sure. Sure. So to go to your first point, absolutely, people are still afraid. We're, this is our one-year anniversary. February 4th of 2020 was the first day that we put out a press release about how we were monitoring coronavirus. So we are now at one year for CCHHS. So that, and people have been isolating for a year and they're tired and they're afraid. And this gives hope for them. And so that's one of those things. When we look at the data from what we had from our educators and our daycare workers, that they were pushing close to 65% to 70% who were getting the vaccine, there's another probably 10 to 15% that are interested in the vaccine. They want to watch it for a while longer before they're interested in pursuing that. And then there's those who don't want to have it. And, and we appreciate that. Again, our job is to offer the vaccine to those who are eligible and it's up to them to make their decision about whether or not that's the choice that they want to take.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that.
You know, just going to say, Lori, just within our organization, we, we initially had about a 45%, maybe it was closer to 50, and now we're inching closer to 55 or 60. So as the vaccine gets rolled out and people, you know, see that their coworkers not growing a third arm.
Yeah.
That, you know, they're, they're interested in, in getting it, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Growing a third arm or glowing.
Glowing.
Glowing abnormally. I just also want to add that, you know, we have those individuals that want to wait and see how others are doing. We will not, as we move forward, then anybody that we've already put, you know, has been within our approved categories, we will continue to vaccinate those individuals. It's not going to be that, oh, you've missed your opportunity and now you don't get to do it. We will keep that open for them.
You know, I think it's also important for people who have had the vaccine, both first and second doses, and I got my second dose last Friday, to, to share their experiences and just at least educate people. And, and for me, the, I, and I had COVID in May. So for me, my first dose, I did not feel good. And that second afternoon of that first dose, I, I was wondering why the heck I was in the category that decided to take it. But the next day, it's like a switch. I felt fine. And with the second dose, my symptoms were much more mild, just general fatigue and a low-grade fever for a couple of days. And then by the 48 hours later, it was pretty much done. So I, you know, I feel, I, I feel fine now. I use normal in air quotes. Normal for me.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Well, thank you guys again so very much. Thank you. And enjoy a little bit of a, little bit of rest while we have some FEMA helpers? No? Okay, I was dreaming for you. Not for you? Oh, okay. But again, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Number 18, which is our non-action items, future agendas, statuses, and communications. Does anyone of the board have anything to bring up under Item 18? Ms. Shute?
I just wanted to say, I, this week, attended RAC as well as the Parks and Rec Commission. And Mayor Bagwell, it was wonderful, the honor that you received at the Parks and Rec Commission for your service and your efforts are truly appreciated.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I'm just so impressed by what is going on in this community, you know, and, and with Parks and Rec, talking about just so many different things, budget needs and priorities and, and working with very limited funds and really making the money go much further than is humanly possible, except it's happening. So that's amazing. And then the respectful conversation about memorials that are unauthorized and we're finding throughout the community and really how to respectfully and thoughtfully move forward with that. And to share with the community some of the difficulties or the perhaps dangers associated with some of these memorials. And I was just truly moved about really how thoughtful the conversation was. And then with RAC, that was super fun in terms of Christmas and decorations and really bringing the community together and celebrating and talking about not just downtown Carson City, but Curry Street. And then perhaps taking Christmas decorations from the roundabout all the way to Winnie Lane, which is super exciting. So I have a lot to learn. I'm super excited and eager to learn and just wanted to share that it's been a very busy but exciting week.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Monday afternoon, we have our CTA meeting, Culture and Tourism Authority. And you, we got some late material, which was a public comment from Steve Kim, the general manager at my place. He's also a member of the CTA. And the comment he's making here is that the CTA is taking up the 1% room tax that is set to expire in May that pays for an arts and cultural coordinator. So we're taking that up at the CTA on Monday and we'll be making a recommendation to this board. So there'll be a future agenda item, you know, later, probably later this month, I'm guessing it'll be at the February meeting. So just, I, I just throw that out there in case you want to tune into that meeting. Monday afternoon, we start at four. We start at four.
Thank you.
Oh, and you know, I want to thank Sharon as well. The artwork in here from Kyle Karsh is, I am probably mispronouncing his name. It's, it really is incredible artwork. The intricacies of the work he did with using, you know, discarded aluminum cans is incredible. So thanks for, for putting that on for us.
You. Deputy City Manager Hicks?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks. I wanted to report to the board that last week I attended the first VNT Railway Commission meeting. The commission thanked Supervisor Jones for his service on the board and, and they expressed their, their sadness as well as I, that he will no longer be serving there on the board. So we are waiting for an appointment from the governor's office to fill his place. But I wanted to let the board know that at the last meeting, another item that we learned of was that the general manager will not be renewing her contract in March. So we are going to spend some time over the next couple of months. We're going to have a couple of workshops to, to look at what the future of the VNT Railway is going to look like. And some of that will be because of discussions of how things will operate next year due to COVID, or this year due to COVID, and then also how we will seek for new management as well. So I will keep the board updated as that progresses.
Thank you so much. City Manager Paulson?
As you know, the 81st session of the Nevada Legislature started on Monday and starting with the next board meeting, thanks to our Assistant DA, we're, we will begin to have a standing agenda item to discuss pending state legislation that may have an impact on Carson City. And this will allow the board to adopt official policy positions and to provide direction to staff and our state lobbyists on whether or not we should support, oppose, or remain neutral on a particular bill. So you'll see that next board meeting.
Great. Does anybody else have anything? Just as a note on the CTA discussion, we're going to have an informative agenda item. We have so many new board members. So before we take up the ordinance to adopt, we'll have one meeting that you really will get the background of the why, the who. Some of it you'll see in the future that I'm going to try to lay out teaching opportunities since we can't have a retreat, we can't do some of the things that we would normally do. So I've asked the city manager and Ms. Hicks to put together kind of the why, the where, and how we got where we got to the place so that when it's time, the following meeting to take up the ordinance discussion, you'll be much more well-versed in the why so that you, to help you make an informed decision. So just to put that out there for you. And I don't think I have anything else. Anyone? Your opportunities are gone. Okay. Then we're going to move on to final public comment, Agenda Item Number 19. Desi, do we have anyone on the line?
There is no final public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that then, I will, if there's no objection, we are adjourned at 10:54. Thank you for a good meeting, everyone.